All right, it's 4 o'clock, June 22nd. Called meeting of the Committee of the Hold order. Roll call Cindy.
Ed Shachner.
President.
Shawn Anderson. Bob Long is absent. Kathy Leaf.
Present.
Kara Cook.
Present.
Tim Hall. Paul Burning is running late. Rick Otino.
Here.
Bob Fiedler.
Here.
Dave Osness is running late. Scott Counter.
Here.
Dan Hanson.
Here.
Gotti Ard.
President.
Greg Teladon.
President.
David Peterson.
Here.
Paulette Anderson.
President.
Judy Ochterhoff.
Here.
Shelley Tomchik.
Here.
And Bill Peavy.
Here.
All right, next item will be approval of the minutes from Tuesday, May 25th. Anybody have any additions or corrections for those minutes?
Please use your mics if you're not speaking.
Our mic is not working.
We'll get that. That's why I'm sorry.
Seeing no additions or corrections to the minute, they will stand approved. Public comment, is there anybody here in the public that wishes to make a comment on items on or off the agenda? Anybody from the public that wishes to make a comment on items on or off the agenda? And the third time, anybody from the public wishes to make a comment on items on or off the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on.
The sign-in sheet is going around, if you could just keep it going please for board members, thank you.
We'll write on business items, strategic planning session, and do I turn it to Ken, and then he turns it over?
Yep, and I will hand it off to Yang Yi, and her and Eric will lead us through tonight's session.
Welcome back everybody, I'm so excited to see all of you. I wanted to just take a moment to celebrate our journey so far. I put a quote in the beginning of our slide, "The more you praise and celebrate your life, the more there is in life to celebrate." And wow, we did a lot of work, lot of work up to this point. We had committees convene to do the vision and mission, we did a comp, we did a SWAT. Wow, you guys were awesome troopers and stood with us for hours on end. So with that, I will work really, really hard for us to get out, hopefully, just a little shy of a little bit over three hours, okay? So I know we're scheduled for four hours, but we did a lot of pre-work, so I hope that that speeds us up, and if we are very efficient and effective tonight, we can get out an hour early, okay? So I want to just give a clap and round of applause for all of you for all that you are doing and what you do in your work and all the, you know, this is your plan, this is your strategic plan, so good job and kudos. This is our last major meeting, and then we will have a plan to present to all of you. So here we are, so we've gone through all of that, we are right here. Board strategy formulation, and so in June, and then we have really our presentation, and we're done. So for tonight, we're going to review the vision and mission, so we, as you all know from the last meeting, we selected a few individuals to help us craft that, and I'm going to have some of them share, because as you can see, I'm masked up, I have allergies, so I have the runny nose, itchy eyes, itchy throat, and so I did take a Zyrtec, but I'll try to conserve my voice as much as possible. And then we're going to review the comp plan and alignment, and go over that, and I'll have that team, that committee kind of share some of their insights. And then we're really going to start the work of identifying those strategic issues, just narrowing it down, because remember, we have department heads and we still have the supervisors, let's come with one list now, let's combine it into one list. And then we're going to complete the goals and objectives, and we have activity that we're going to take everyone through to do that. So by the end of tonight, we should have it pretty much done, and then allow you some time to also review, I'll talk about next steps at the end, but. So, let's get to our vision and mission. Is there anybody in our, the committee that wants to share? Who was in our vision and mission? I know Adam was, I know Bob was, who else? Oh yes, yes, who wants to share? Who wants to share what we created as the vision and mission? You can speak into your mic. Should I call on someone?
I can talk, I guess.
Should I volunteer?
We had a really productive meeting, a lot of ideas, the technology that we used kind of let us put little chats and boxes in and what our thoughts were. We came up with three or four different and kind of worked from there, put different thoughts and ideas, we researched everything that everyone had provided to us, and you know, threw out some cons and pros of different words to use, and this is what we came up with. Hope you like it.
Thank you, that was wonderfully done. So our vision statement is be the county that delivers service with compassion and respect for people and the environment, and your mission is we will strengthen our social and economic future by providing health, safety, and well-being for all. Thoughts from the ones that didn't attend? How are you feeling about this? And then even further thoughts from the committee members on why we chose certain words, certain things, you're welcome. And then give five minutes for discussion, otherwise, this is voted in. Thoughts, comments, what do you guys think? Is this your vision and mission for St. Croix County? I heard something, please speak in the mic. I'm sorry, I'm going to try to speak in the mic too, because I have a mask on, so.
It looks perfect to me.
Thank you.
In the vision statement, it does look well done, however, in a vision statement, you're stating what may be a future action. Therefore, it would need to be to be the county that delivers service with compassion and respect for people and the environment, otherwise, it's a standstill statement.
So Dan, I know, why don't you?
I'll allow that.
Okay. Dan was the one that, I had to be, and then Dan put be, so.
Give them your explanation, Dan.
I was just trying to question you.
Dan, you had a really good explanation.
You're not quite there.
I like to be.
Okay, to be is okay, all right. So we'll change that to be, so noted, to be the county that delivers service with compassion and respect for people and the environment. Thank you, Dan, you're such a good sport. All right.
Mission statement, could someone explain to me their definition of well-being for all?
This is a, this is a, the conversation revolved around the older-fashioned notion of health, safety, and welfare, which is a traditional phrase that would mean, kind of encompassed the mission of the county, is mandated by the state, health, safety, and welfare. But, just the word welfare has its politically loaded, and kind of stepping back from that and still using the services that the county is mandated to provide and the mission that the county does provide, taking a look at not only those things which Health and Human Services provides, but even vital records, and the attitude that the staff has when people come into this building and they're nervous and they're not sure where to go, we want to make people feel well-served, well-being for all. And that's kind of the way that comes about.
Thank you, Dan.
I think there was other comments from my committee, did you want to say? Tim? Okay.
Turn it on.
Are we good?
You know, I could go home and work in my garden. I think Supervisor Hanson covered it very well. We were trying to avoid the word welfare with some of its connotations, but we also wanted to touch, I think, on the wider view of what the county does. It does fall into specific deliverables, but there's also an opportunity, and I think we've discussed this, to blend some of those services maybe to be more efficient, and also to provide a more encompassing experience for the people that we do serve.
And then, does Adam, Bob, do you guys have more to add? I know you were part of the committee too.
Just to add to what Supervisor Hall was saying, the last three words, essentially the well-being for all, that was really just an effort to make sure that our language is more inclusive. We felt that both well-being and instead of using, in our previous mission, I believe we were saying for St. Croix County residents, not everybody who is, or citizens, not everybody who is within the county is necessarily a citizen, so we wanted to make sure that we are inclusive not only of the services that we offer, but the people we are offering them to.
Anything else for you, Bob, to add?
Just some of my thinking that went into the term well-being had to do with an overall sort of encompassing term for a focus on health instead of a focus or implication of illness, so a more of a positive connotation.
Okay, any other questions? Alan?
Thanks. So I guess when I read that mission statement, I didn't have any problem with what was there. What I have a problem, concern about is what isn't there, which is our resources, our natural resources, and we don't, not everything is about the people who are here, some of it is about maintaining, what brings people here are our natural resources, are there amenities, that kind of thing. I just felt like that it's in the vision statement when speaking about our environment, but it doesn't feel like it's at all in the mission statement to me.
We've, and as you know, Ellen, we've got our natural resources covered thoroughly in a comprehensive plan, and also in this plan, the, that we're working on is going to include our natural resources, and it's been, what is it, the top priority that's come up from the supervisors, that our natural resources are covered? When we wrote this, it was agreed by the people that were writing it that this should be concise, that we wanted to say a lot with as few words as possible. We were given several examples, the one that stuck with me the most was the one from the Mayo Clinic, which was probably less than 20 words, and it was impactful. So instead of trying to cover every single base, which would lead to a 40 or 50-word mission statement, we kept it as clean as possible with the idea that the rest of the plan, or not the rest of the plan, the rest, yeah, the rest of the plan would cover those things which are most important to us, and so far, our natural resources are among our highest priorities, I think it's number two.
I think, and if I'm wrong, the group can answer too, my understanding when we're doing this to high level, I heard from all of you, a part of the subcommittee is that well-being kind of encompasses that natural resources, because if we take care of our natural resources, we, you know, we take care of our people, and it's kind of like a circle, like a circle of life, 360, so, Tim.
I did it right. So I also think the sentence that we put in to strengthen our social and economic future, also to some extent speaks to that, because, you know, being careful stewards and husbands of our resources in the county will strengthen our social and economic future.
Okay, okay, I want to make sure I.
I believe we can still keep this statement clean by just adding, "We will strengthen our environmental, social, and economic future." That way, we are encompassing all, and it is clarified for anyone reading the statement.
Okay, let me make sure, hands, okay, go ahead.
I think short and sweet is good, and we get too wordy, we'll have folks falling asleep before they get halfway through it.
Okay, you know, please, please speak, sometimes I can't see this way, so, go ahead.
On the notion of being short and sweet, going back to the vision, I'm just wondering if we can make that more direct by just saying, instead of to be the county that delivers, can we just say, "St. Croix County will deliver services with compassion and respect for people and the environment."
So. It seems. Say that again?
I don't know, and I don't know what the discussion was with the committee, but I'm wondering if we can take out, "To be the county that delivers," and just say, "St. Croix County will deliver services with compassion and respect for people and the environment."
Yeah, I think some of the discussion with the committee is that we are, there's already in, there's some preconceived assumptions already, that if it's a vision of St. Croix County, it is a, you know, vision of St. Croix County, and it means it's talking about the county already, so they didn't put it there for, again, trying to keep it concise and memorable, so that's to your point there, but you said another something, and I don't want to miss that, and want other committee members to answer as well. What are, so does, Kara, I don't want to lose your thought, you said something really.
Yeah, I guess I'm not, I'm not sure, I just think that there's value, and I think the vision and mission statements that we've had in the past are, you know, get wordy, and that's a problem, if someone says, "What's our mission statement?", so I just thought that the less words in our vision statement, the better, and I like to use more direct words versus passive words, so.
Okay, people are truckling in, I wanted, okay, I saw some hands.
I just had a question about the mission statement and the word providing, are we really in the business of providing health, safety, and well-being, or are we ensuring health, safety, and well-being at the county level? So should it read, you know, strengthen our social and economic future by ensuring health, safety, and well-being for all?
Okay, I'm going to rely on my committee members, and Adam, whose terminology, I'm going to wordsmith ensuring, just to see what that definition is. See if it encompasses that, because we had a long argument, I mean, not argument, we had a long conversation around providing and, what was the word that we, promoting?
Yeah, I think it was promoting that we had in there previously. I went back and forth between providing and promoting, I think the group as a whole was really pushing for providing, and I can't remember exactly what you were saying, Dan, but you were, you kind of went through the list of the different services that we provide, and hearing it in that context made me more comfortable with the language of providing, because if you look at, we are providing services, we're providing services that although maybe sometimes they're promoting, sometimes they're going a little bit over, beyond just promoting. So providing was, again, a little bit more inclusive of the services as a whole.
So providing was also encompasses promoting, providing could also encompass ensuring, so just the definition of ensuring, it would make, it would be okay, it sounds like, make certain that something shall occur or be the case, make certain of obtaining or providing, so. Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not attached to the word. Who's he?
I would agree with either putting ensuring or providing services, because we don't actually provide health or safety or well-being, we're providing the access to those things. So I think ensuring would be a little more concise.
Okay, I'm going to need my committees here, okay? So Dan, and then Tim.
Sure, well, just to go back to the idea of providing, we're talking about providing services, and that was the question, the original question, who asked the question? Was that Paul?
I asked, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. So providing services, when somebody goes up to get their powits, their septic service, that's a service that's offered, not, it's not something that's insured or something that's, that, it's, somebody comes out, they look at your land, they tell you if you need it to be humped, or, it's a service, it's actually something that's, you pay a fee for the permit and you get something for it. Vital records, you want to know, you have to get your marriage license certified, you want to get a passport, that's a service. There's hundreds of services that are offered by the county, and they're provided, they're not suggested, they're not encouraged, they're provided, there's services offered in Health and Human Services, and there's things that are provided by the county, there's things that are mandated by state law and federal law that the county provide, provided, and that's where that word comes into play, it's actually an action word, mandated word, it's a word that describes what a county government does, that's why it fell into this mission.
Okay, Tim? Sure.
Well, I agree with that part, especially the statement where we are going to provide health and safety, because we do do that today. The only area where I see maybe an opportunity to change, I'm not sure that we can really provide well-being for everybody. To me, that's a separate article, that might be one where it goes with act to ensure or promote. That's my thought.
So would you suggest putting the word promote before well-being? Is that kind of how you would clean that up? Okay.
Yes.
So what we're landing on is we will strengthen our social and economic future by providing health, safety, and promoting well-being for all. Okay, Alan?
I guess I still, I thought that Scotty made a very good suggestion, if we're adding those other words, why couldn't we add environmental, social, and economic future? It's one word she suggested.
Okay. So, Adam, okay.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So, again, we were definitely trying to not leave words out, but look at ways that we can make this as concise as possible, because you want it to be something that people will remember and will stick with them. Looking at the vision statement and the mission statement, we looked at those being, yes, they could be standalone, but really working in concert with one another, so looking at the last couple words of the vision statement, respect for people and the environment, we're really looking at that as being all-encompassing and feeding into the mission statement. So, providing health, safety, and well-being for all, that well-being piece was looking back at that environment piece, and not necessarily, I don't want to use the word catch-all, but it's, you really need to look at the language to, what's the best way that you can simplify this while still being representative of everything, and this was the best solution that the committee was able to come up with.
Okay, any other thoughts? Ken, I know you were going to.
More important than adding any specific word, when we put 40 people together, everyone wants to add an extra word to it, is that it's short, concise, and memorable. If you have a memorable mission statement, it's going to be more impactful for the organization than trying to add every single word that you might think is missing from it. So I like the conciseness of it.
Okay. I can't myself.
Okay.
Because it's fun. So why don't we make it even more broad, instead of trying to like pinpoint, and then like this group's left out, and oh, this mission statement is not there, why don't we, and I'm open for suggestions on this, so say something like, "We will strengthen our social and economic future by providing government services in an efficient manner," or something along those lines, because we're not here, like, there may be a time where government's no longer promoting health, or, I mean, I don't, I don't know, so why don't we make our mission statement very broad to cover the government services that we provide?
So what would you like it to say, again?
I don't know, can someone rewind the tape? No, just joking. Like, "We will strengthen our social and economic future by providing government services for all." Or required government services, or efficiently, or, I don't know, something, but that's what we're here to do, and things change all the time, statutorily, in the state, federally, even locally. So if we try to get too concise, we get lost on which noodle salad, that's a church picnic reference.
So a mission statement can usually change, but a mission statement is one in which it's the how, right? How are you guys going to get to your vision statement? So how are we going to get to our vision statement? So sometimes the mission statement changes, in the next three years, you might change that a little bit. Vision statement's pretty long-term, so to be the county that delivers services with compassion and respect for people and the environment. And then how are we going to do that? How are we going to accomplish that vision statement? We will strengthen our social and economic future by providing health, safety, and well-being for all. Very concise, not too broad, if you become too broad, then what are you, right? What do you do? People start, like, what do you offer? So I just want you guys to think about that. The vision ties into the mission, the mission ties back to the vision, it's how you get to the vision. So you don't necessarily need to be redundant in words, so I'll just kind of put on my consulting hat, say that. So environment is already there, Adam's is 100% right in that there's already words in the mission, I'm sorry, in the vision that does not have to be in the mission. So it plays off of each other, again, the vision is here, the mission is how you get here, so it connects with each other, if that makes sense, so it's top-down and bottom-up. So if you feel the connection, absolutely, so that's just a little more information, so if you're feeling like, oh gosh, the mission didn't say environment, well, the vision said environment, and if there's something missing, so just food for thought, just want to give you guys some of that feedback, so you can kind of think a little bit, go ahead.
Thank you. In looking at these once again, I would say the vision statement should be the mission statement, and the mission statement should be the vision statement. However, I would identify St. Croix County, because otherwise, it's just any county, we should be proud of what we're saying. And in the top statement, we are the county that delivers service with compassion and respect for people and the environment, that pretty much encompasses everything that everyone has been saying, and the vision statement certainly. We are trying to strengthen our social and economic future by providing health, safety, and well-being. That appears to be more of a vision statement.
Okay, there's, I see a comment over here, okay.
I'm wondering if we're to the point that we should actually take a vote on these and accept or move on and make, try to make. accept or move on and make, try to make changes. Otherwise, we seem to be going in a circle, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I would look for action to accept, I don't know if that's the right word, we really don't do action, but.
I'm over.
Motion by Supervisor Peterson to accept the mission and vision statement as presented with the changing to the 2B in the first line. And then I have a second by Supervisor Hanson. So, I would, if it's okay with everybody, I think we'll take a vote on what's here and move on. So, what, show of hands would be good enough. I don't think we need, yeah. So, all those in favor of the vision and mission statement as presented, raise your hand. And I can't count at this angle, so. Can you count from up there? This angle I can't.
Yes, I can count from up here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16.
Okay. And those opposed or would like some changes?
Scotty, that's my role.
So, one.
All right. We have motion passes or action passes, so yep, we have a mission and vision and mission statement, and I think we can move forward.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Lots of great discussions, by the way. But, yeah, the committee worked really hard on this, so thanks to the committee. All right. So, the next committee was the comp plan committee. And we review the comp plan and its alignment with the strategic plan. And so, you're going to get in your groups later, when you start to do the goals and objectives, a list of just the goals and objectives from the comp plan. I didn't print the whole thing. It's a huge document, okay? I just printed the goals and objectives. So, you guys will take a look at that and decide if there are some goals from there that you want on to your strategic plan. But anyways, what we found is there's alignment from the strategic plan with the comp plan. There are still, you know, there were issues. The comp plan is in 2012, so that is about nine years. So, you're up due for a comp plan. So, I hope that the strategic plan will help and some of the information we're doing now is kind of like kill two birds with one stone, that we can just, you know, kind of help with the comp plan as well. But that there are goals for sure from the comp plan that you can break it down to the next two to three years that you guys can really work on and, again, hit both goals for comp and strategic plan. And there's been a lot that has been completed and some that are still relevant and needs to be worked on. So, that's kind of overarching, high-level, what we found from the comp plan. Now, I want my comp plan participants to speak a little bit more about their experience and also what they noticed and some of the things that came up that they want us to consider as we look at the strategic plan, goals, and objectives. So, Alan, Bob, Kathy, where's Kathy?
I'm over here, but I'm-
Oh, okay. Oh, I didn't see, like, I know I saw you come in. So, do you guys want to share? Nobody wants to go first? Okay. I twisted her because I'm like, all right, someone's got to go. We got to move. We've got a lot of work to do, guys, if we want to get out of here in three hours, okay? Otherwise, we'll be pushing to four.
So, we basically, Kathy had to do it separately, but the rest of us met as a group, and we talked about those three overriding points pretty quickly. And one thing that we did get into a little bit was, as we looked at some of the list of priorities and things that we've gotten at the previous committee of the whole meeting, is that there are a lot of statements and comments and things that one, trying to obtain one is actually contrary to something else. So, when you look at things, certain things, there's, people want more affordable housing. It's been brought up repeatedly, but trying to provide more affordable housing is something that it's hard to do because there's a lot of market-driven directive or history in this county. And so, just saying you want it, and there's not really great ways to make it happen. Other things, you know, protection of natural resources and protection of agriculture and agricultural resources, it's in direct conflict with saying you want to encourage more residential development because it just eats up the agricultural land and it impacts our resources and our groundwater and everything. So, we talked that, and we got much more specific. I'm giving it to you at an extremely high level. But the reality is, as you talk through things, even the idea of broadband, providing broadband has a great impact for some of our rural communities. It's very positive, but it also will just encourage more sprawl development that is not positive for our natural resources, our groundwater, our agricultural activities. They're in opposition. So, a lot of these things, you need to think about balance and compromise. And so, we had spent a bit of, and we used a lot of examples when it came to that as we talked it through. That was pretty much, I think, how a lot of our conversation revolved. And then Bob took us in a different direction a little bit, which you might want to address, so.
What direction did I take? I think, and this was my first time in working with this comprehensive plan, but I think two of the things I focused on when I read through this was, in terms of, say, housing as a future component of this comprehensive plan, was to think in terms of not just affordable housing for those who have jobs and can rent or buy, but thinking in terms of safety net and providing a infrastructure for the county that looks to those folks that don't have an ability to afford housing or have other, have other conditions or situations that prevent them from getting housing, so providing that safety net infrastructure. The other thing that came to mind was in terms of looking into the future for healthcare, considering some of the lessons learned from the pandemic and improving access to care more broadly through broadband expansion and through telehealth as a means to extend healthcare to more people, provide more immediate access to healthcare for people that geographically might not be able to access care. So, I was thinking in those terms as we talked through the comp plan. I'm not sure if I mentioned anything else that took us off track, but that's what comes to mind.
That was wonderful. Kathy?
Darn, Mike. We talked, I talked individually, I couldn't make the meeting, there's that. But we spoke directly. And I think that what we uncovered is a lot of what Ellen said, you know, we're in conflict with certain things. And what we have to do is just focus on the things we can accomplish in three years and whittle away at some of it. I think I talked about some of the social safety net things that Bob did as well related to our top issues, so they both sort of covered what I was thinking.
Okay. The only thing that I didn't hear come from my team here and committee is there is intergovernmental cooperation. You want to mention that, Alan?
So, one of the things, for those of you who don't know, a county comprehensive plan has a list of elements that must be included under state law. It's not optional. And one of those elements is intergovernmental cooperation. We not only have an individual section on intergovernmental cooperation, but we, when we wrote our comp plan, we wove intergovernmental cooperation and identified it in every single other element and identified ways in which we could do that in terms of specific policies. So, it's woven throughout, and I think that's something that, when we look at the materials we've produced to the date, there wasn't a lot of discussion of that. But that's something that I thought was one of the few things that was missing from a connection between the strategic plan and the comp plan. So, I think I'll leave it at that. We'll try to build it in as we go along.
Okay. So, that's it for the comp plan. So, that's some things to consider. And again, when you break out into the four or five different themes, that's what we're getting next to, you're going to get two sheets. One is the comp plan, just goals and objectives, so you can review that. The other, if you don't have all the information prior, hopefully you've retained some of that knowledge in the work that we've done into writing these goals and objectives, okay? So, we're going to get to that. But that's it for the comp plan. So, thank you to my team that spent lots of time looking at that. So, let's get to the strategic issues. So, in front of you are the notes from our last meeting. And so, this is what we have. Department heads came up with four different themes. Supervisors came up with five different themes. Can we now, as a group, come up with one list of four or five themes? I see natural resources will probably go on one. So, Eric, if you can write that on there, one of the categories. And I see an agreement in service delivery as a second one. What are, let's, you know, this is up to you guys, have conversation. We have community well-being. So, look at the definitions. So, in your notes, in your sheets, you had different ideas of what you thought that meant. Could it, which title, which, you know, issue do you want to title it, basically, is what it comes down to? Thoughts? Who wants to start first? So, am I wrong about natural resources and service delivery? Okay. No. Okay. Everybody's good on that because I'm like, it's on both lists, so I think we can move those on. But the other ones were just categories differently. I think you guys were talking about very similar things, but just categorizing it a little bit different. So, conversation. Here's time for conversation and discussion. Who wants to start first? I'll give you guys a couple minutes to look at the notes to refresh your memory of what you guys did. That's fine. Because maybe you guys will agree. So, take a look at the sheet in front of you. One is department head, and in the back, notes. And one is supervisors. There are themes and what they were thinking for each area. I'm like, all right, you guys read this. I saw some like deer in the headlights. Go, okay, we have someone that wants, please speak into the mic.
So, broadband is part of public infrastructure, so public infrastructure could just be another title.
Okay.
And to add on to that, I think recreation talks about the parks. So, parks, recreation, broadband are what the department heads were talking about for public infrastructure.
Oh, okay. So.
That's my interpretation anyways.
I agree, yeah.
Any other thoughts on that? So, I think we're agreeing to public infrastructure as a third theme.
Well, I don't know if I agree with the title.
Oh, okay. Speak, go ahead.
I just don't agree with the title. I don't have a suggestion.
Okay. Okay. Someone doesn't like the title, but not quite sure what a different title is. The other, hmm. So, look between the two sheets at the different notes. Any other com, Tim and then Carrie?
So, I would suggest maybe, rather than just calling it public infrastructure, it's public infrastructure and services.
Service delivery is-
Yeah. That might be too much services.
Okay.
So, public infrastructure and facilities.
Okay. So, there's a public infrastructure and facilities. Carrie, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I'm just going to say I like the department head categories.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So, shall we adopt the, someone likes the department heads?
So, to my mind, that leaves out one orphan on the supervisor side, and that's zoning and development.
One orphan. I love how you said that.
Well, everything else tucks in, you know, and can be reconciled. Zoning and development, I struggle with where that fits under the ones that the department heads have come up with.
Can the department explain? Because I know we had a lot of conversation on zoning and development, and we put it somewhere. So, department heads, I know you guys put it somewhere, so Ken or Alan? Okay, Alan.
Well, I'll just jump in, and you said, I don't know how, why they put it where they did, but I do know that zoning and development is like a lot of other things in the county. It's not always yes. It's not always a service. Sometimes it's no, you can't do that. We have, as part of that protection and that regulation that we are required to do that we're doing on behalf of the state, you know? So, it's, and development occurs, but in appropriate locations. So, it's not always about making sure it happens. Sometimes it's making sure it doesn't happen, so. And I think that's, it's not just service delivery as in we're going to make sure it happens. It's sometimes making sure things don't. I think that's where it gets tricky.
So, I'm hearing, Alan, from you high level, is that it feels like the department head didn't cover that as a top, as a theme? Okay. Sure. But it's not fitting into the four themes. Okay. Ken and then-
Yeah, I think zoning is one of our services. Zoning is one of the services that the county provides. And so, yes, it's a yes or a no answer that they get, but it's a service.
We had talked at the table here, too, and we were saying potentially, public infrastructure could be reduced to just infrastructure. That would also develop, or, you know, lump in some other things as well, specifically development, for those who don't like the public infrastructure. Otherwise, we can keep it.
Okay. I heard one very clear from Carrie. She likes the department heads. The rest, I've heard little bits of information here and there, not a nay, yay, not some kind of strong opinion either way. So, what are we feeling? Public infrastructure, infrastructure, we, are we thinking, have a separate zoning and development added on to department head list? I'm hearing some of those things, and correct me if I'm wrong. Thoughts, team? Okay, Tim?
So, I'll go into the Kara Cook, Supervisor Cook camp with the department heads, but I do think zoning and development, while it is a service, it also goes to something of, you know, what was mentioned as well, that sometimes the service is saying no, so I think it needs to kind of stand alone.
Okay. Thoughts? So, the four from the department heads, and Tim is suggesting plus zoning and development as the fifth. I was trying to make you guys wake up. All right, we got to get our fourth theme so we can get our goals and objectives underneath there. When you think about your goals and objectives, even for your different departments, does it fit somewhere? I guess that's, that might be a question to ask yourself. Does it fit somewhere? Do you feel like it fits somewhere? If you're thinking about the things you want to change, the things you want as your goals, does it fit somewhere? So, Dan?
Right. Zoning and development is important, but it's not necessarily something that needs to be this broad on the front page, you know? It's something that's going to happen no matter what, you know? So, go with the, and here's the other thing, department heads have got more experience in government than- And here's the other thing, department heads have got more experience in government than I do. And if this is the set of categories that they came up with, I'm inclined to say that's probably a good idea.
Okay, Tim, and, okay. Well, who is, who, did someone have their voice back here? Thank you, I can't see...
I agree with the department heads, just go with that.
Okay.
I'll go along with the majority, but I still feel that it is, when we're talking about strategic issues, development and zoning is part of our strategic mission, because we're looking past the next budget cycle down to other generations.
Okay, so keeping Tim's comments in mind, as you said, goals and objectives, but I think we're going with...
Send it.
Send it.
Right there, zoning and development, for pi.
Oh, I don't think I was hearing that. I don't think I was hearing that. I was thinking, I was thinking agreement with department heads themes, the four. That's what I'm hearing.
Zoning and development fit in all four of the department head categories. So to have something specific for zoning and development is redundant. Because even though it may not be specifically stated in these four things, it is definitely part of all four of those.
I agree.
Because as I was sitting here trying to take some of the pieces in here, I ended up with some in community well-being, some in service delivery, some in natural resources. So I think it's all over the place.
Do you think we're ready to vote? Was there enough discussion? I'm, I'm hearing head nods that we're ready. Department heads, anybody else have any comments? Otherwise, you guys take it over.
We seem to, yep, reach that point. So I guess I'd look for action to have either the four strategic issues from department heads, or then add the fifth, community well-being. And Tim, go ahead.
I will then accept the department heads categories as our...
Okay, we have a second. And we won't ask for further discussion, we've had a good debate. So all those in favor of having the department heads, raise your hands, please.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. Boom. And then...
Those opposed, raise your hands, please.
Okay. One, two, three.
Alright, we have four strategic issues.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, so now we are going to break out into groups, but before I come back to this slide, I'm gonna explain what we're gonna do. We're gonna break out into the four groups. So, department heads, if you have goals and objectives that are likely going to be in those categories, please stay there. Please go there and stay there. You're not gonna move too much unless that you cover some other area, okay? So if you're in the service delivery, go to the service delivery and stay there. So that's department heads, okay? Supervisors, you guys have the opportunity to move around to choice of two, okay? A choice of two of the themes. So pick which one that you're passionate about, you know, you know, feeling like you're really passionate about setting some goals and objectives around, and go to that. And if you have like all of them, and you're passionate, but you see in the room that everyone is at service delivery, go to your, maybe your top two, you know, and not your top one. Go to your top three. So we're gonna have the department heads divide themselves first into the different groups, and then we're going to have the supervisors pick which one they feel passionate about setting some goals and objectives with. And I have the activity sheets here. So before we break out, what are goals and objectives? I want to make sure we are all aligned in what this looks like. So a goal is a broad outcome of what you want to achieve. An objective is, once a goal is set, what specific products, services will be attained, to attain that goal. Here are some examples. Goal: Make mental health and, I made these up, by the way, but this is so you have an example. But I want it to be an example that is relevant to you guys. I know that that's really important. So make mental health and AODA services accessible to citizen. What results do we want? That's the goal. Objective: Have a mobile mental health and AODA clinic that travels to three rural areas three days a week. That's a deliverable that we are gonna provide to accomplish that goal. And then, this is the part you don't do, but I want you guys to kind of just see the progression down now. Department heads are gonna set some strategies and actions. So the strategy will be acquire vehicle that can be easily adapted to safely hold medical supplies and provide a private room for counseling. Okay? If you're gonna go with this goal. I love that tune. It's cheering for... Alright, action. So then in action, well, what are some of the actions? So actions get into the very detail of who. So research mobile health clinics and determine the right vehicle to purchase by the end of July, and who's gonna do this? And because I work with Bob and Adam, Adam and Bob, or one of them is gonna do it. That's what it's gonna get to, right? So that's who, that's action. So as you can see, the progression from what you guys do as supervisors and department heads together leads to a very measurable plan. So, big picture. Vision: To be the county that delivers a service with compassionate respect for people and the environment. Mission: We will strengthen our social and economic future by providing health, safety, and well-being for all. So our goal, remember our goal that I just shared, this is how you see the alignment. Make mental health and AODA services accessible to citizens. The objective: Have a mobile mental health and AODA clinic that travels to designated rural areas three days a week. It goes down, okay? And then it comes up. A strategic plan is when you can, you can track it down and you can track it up. So if we are providing a mobile mental health and accessible mental health services to citizens, we are strengthening our social and economic future. And in the end, what is that result? We become a county that delivers services with compassionate respect for people and the environment. Okay, does this help? Alright. So that's a strategic planning. It breaks it up, from up down. That's how you can tell it's a strategic plan. There's a lot of plans out there, but a strategic plan breaks it up from the top down. So everything aligns back to your vision, your vision aligns back to your objectives. Here are some more examples, before I break you guys out into group and start doing your activity worksheet. You will have 40 minutes for each theme that you choose. I'll set a timer, I'll say switch, okay? Here's more goals. Make housing affordable to all citizens. What results do we want? Again, that answers the question. Objective: Have a renter voucher program. Again, I'm making these up, but it was related to your industry, okay? Your county. Another goal: Improve access to clean and safe water. Objective: Promote the increase in the number of homes connected to safe drinking water and adequate wastewater treatment. Okay, that's an objective. There's another objective. Provide the public with timely access to water quality data in readily understandable web-based format. Okay, that's an objective. Goal: Improve communication with the public. Objective: Have subscription options for citizens to receive the information they want and need. Again, I made a lot of these up, but you can start to see goals and objectives, and how they connect with each other. The what results do we want, and what deliverables are we providing? Okay? So I'm gonna have, how about we take like a five-minute bathroom break, and then come back? And get in, department heads, get into your theme, and supervisors, decide where you really feel passionate about setting some goals and objectives around. We want to give you guys the option, okay? So five minutes break, come back. Feel free to eat as you kind of get, because I'm gonna start handing out packets. There's a lot more information I need to give you, so if you want to move to your respective places, and I will give you more instructions. So in your activity packet, you're going to do the work on paper. The wall, yeah.
Okay, can we have just quieted on one second?
Okay. I appreciate it. I know you're all chewing and trying to, I'm trying to respect you eating, and also us moving right along, so we can get you to where you want to be. So please feel free to continue to eat as you move into your groups. That's totally okay. But as you move to your groups...
Hey guys, can we have your attention just for a second? In the corner.
Lots of instructions left. So when you move to your groups, you're gonna do the worksheet. So there's gonna be a worksheet that says strategy issues, so you're gonna put natural resources on here. You get two sheets, because there's gonna be two supervisor groups. So the, one of the department head is going to be a writer, or note taker, or writes on this. One is gonna be a speaker, okay, for the department heads. There's gonna be two groups of supervisors. So one group for, the first supervisor group, the second sheet, okay, is gonna be for the second supervisor group. When you, yes, yes. After the first 40 minutes, we're gonna, the supervisors are gonna switch. You guys stay in your respective spaces. So department heads, stay in their respective spaces, unless, maybe if yours extremely cross over, then you could go to one, but hopefully you stay. So for the department heads, some of you just stay in your respective spaces. So again, I need a department head that will write all the goals and objectives down, and I would need a department head that will be a speaker, okay? Once they have come up with the goals and objectives, and if there's some duplicates, that's okay. What you're gonna do is write it on the board, once it's done. This is what, this is like the rough draft, that's like the final draft, if that makes sense, okay?
Yeah, don't write on that until we're ready.
Don't write on that until you're ready, okay? So work on the paper form first, and write it up afterwards, okay? Because we're gonna be sharing that, the speaker is gonna be sharing that with the group, and we're gonna have discussion, again, to agree, disagree, kind of like what we've been doing so far, okay? So does that make sense for everybody? Alright. Okay, last thing, okay, before we move. Parking lot. Let's say there's a lot of great ideas, and you start to action plan, and you start to like, oh, I wanna, you know, I want you guys to do this, and that, and this, and that, but it doesn't fit with the goal or objective, please put it in the parking lot. There's a parking lot sheet also in your group, okay? So I hope that's clear. I'm gonna come around and observe the groups and help you out. So 40 minutes, then we're gonna rotate, okay? So 40 minutes for the first supervisor groups to go to their, you know, to their first passion area, 40 minutes for the second. Alright, I'm gonna, alright, let's break out. I'm gonna hand this out to the four different categories. Okay, if you can get to your seats, that would be great. We have 15 minutes per theme to discuss. And we will have to go to at least 7:30, so I appreciate all your patience and time.
We supposed to go back after we've passed?
Yes, go back, unless you are the reporter, please. We're gonna have the reporter stand up and go to their area.
So you want me to pass them?
Alright.
Ellen, come on now.
Okay.
You need me to go first?
15 minutes, Ellen.
I get 15 whole minutes?
Yep.
He said it, I get 15, I get 15 minutes, where's the clock?
15 is a total of presenting and discussion.
Oh, oh, okay.
Unless you guys, you know what? There's no rush. I mean, if we want to go to eight, we did plan for four hours.
We said 10.
I was trying to be respectful of the individuals who are like, please, it would be nice if we cut some time off. So if we plan 15 minutes for discussion and presentation, we will get out at 7:30. Now, if there's more, I'll just play it by ear.
You need me to whistle?
Yes.
Ah!
My kids hate me.
That's your cue, Ellen. Okay. Ours was probably the smallest group, from what we could see, so we get to go first. Natural resources. Can you hear me? Is this working? Yeah, okay. So the first group, we basically came up with five, four goals, five goals, five goals. And then the second group added a little bit to it. So the first goal was to continue and expand on our water quality initiatives. For those of you who are returning county board members, you know that we have a water quality report, and with a variety of very specific tasks, goals, and objectives that was written a few years ago, and we have been working on that and making an awful lot of progress, so we started out with that. And then we came up with specific objectives. Expand the educational activities to increase awareness. We've continued to do that, but we have some ideas of how we could do more, that we can implement as policies. Continue our well testing, that will mean we need more funding. We've been ongoing on that, we've done screening, and we've also encouraged property owners to do testing, and we've done baseline testing, but we need to continue to do that. Expand source testing. So we did our first source testing, and our committee will be having a report on the results of that at their next meeting. And in addition to that, we need to continue doing that, and that means expanding it, in terms of repeating it and expanding where the tests are done, and then needs more funding. Adding staff was something that the last group two added, adding staff to address more practices and educational efforts, because this wasn't just groundwater, it was groundwater and surface water, and we talked about both of those in a quite thorough discussion, a second group did. Next goal was expand enforcement of land use ordinances to protect property rights, property values, and basically to get more enforcement of our existing ordinances. Some objectives was hire, train, and retain enforcement staff, which means adding more staff, in case you didn't get that. Kind of had to clarify that, because based on the comments from the second group. Another objective was continually evaluate ordinances to ensure that they meet the goals of the state, county, and the state laws. We do that right now, but sometimes it's really important to keep those moving, and we've made a lot of strides in that with our new software, so this should be easier and go happen faster going forward. Another goal was maintain intergovernmental relationships. We simplified that, but the comment that was in the materials from the county board was focusing on city, village, town, and county relationships. So we just called it intergovernmental. An objective would be holding public meetings and hearings whenever they need to be, and then added another objective about attending more meetings... And then added another objective about attending more meetings with different governmental agencies. Kind of had to write this fast, which requires more staff, quite frankly. That one was kind of fun. Conversations with Mr. Counter. So another goal, acquire natural resource areas for conservation and recreation. We expanded on something that was stated by both the department head and the county board members. Sort of natural areas, broadened it a little bit. Conservation and recreation also broadened it a little bit. Objectives, identify sites, possible locations. Also, another objective, identify uses such as hunting and camping, and then fund it. Another goal was improve accessibility to natural resources and recreation for the public's mental health. Objective would be look at the proximity and make sure that it's guys' close proximity to residents who might not have the resources to travel distances. And also look at expanding physical or what we use call universal accessibility. As we think about and talked about, there's a lot of baby boomers, many people in this room. And there's a lot of people with disabilities that aren't obvious. They aren't a broken leg or missing limb or other physical things, like a wheelchair. They can be smaller things like weight and the need to have assistance as far as visibility and that kind of thing. So universal accessibility, because our parks have been, some of them are older and have been designed mostly for the ADA, which ADA doesn't address all of those things. So those are the goals and objectives. Did you time me, Ken? Pretty short.
You're perfect. All right.
Any comments or questions, additions?
So the goal is to get more staff?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, well, I didn't write that. I just responded to their questions and then they had to, you know, tell me what I wrote, so.
Other comments, discussion, thoughts? Okay. Remember, as you're listening to these goals and objectives, think about capacity, resources. Can this be achieved in the next two to three years? Okay? So every sheet that we're going through, we're looking at a small timeframe of two to three years of really measurable goals during your time in leadership that you guys can really, you know, prioritize and take this forward and accomplish these things, okay? So, all right, hearing, seeing none. We're moving over to that group, service delivery.
Okay, I'll start over here. There is a lot of overlap between the two, but I'll go, I'll start with this one first, with our first group. So it was improve the employee experience working for SCC. And some of the objectives, originally these objectives were listed as our own goals. But as I was looking at it, I realized those are actually objectives for this goal. So I just combined those. So an objective is to offer cross-training for staff. So they can learn other positions. That helps with them being able to maybe move to a different position if they want to. Also to create progression opportunities. A lot of our positions have no progression opportunities. And so when someone gets into a certain role, they're kind of stuck there because we don't have another level for them to go to. Provide work-life balance. This means flexible scheduling, remote work, thinking of other alternative ways to provide for work-life balance. Offer training and development opportunities. Each department, I think, operates a little differently with that. In our department, we have a certain budget allocated for each employee to have certain training and development dollars. So wanting to see if we can continue to enhance that, because that is important to a lot of employees. And then to improve the manager's aptitude with coaching and development with their own employees. Making sure they're having those performance conversations. Making sure they're helping, working towards the goals of their employees. So that was under improve the employee experience. The other one was shorten response time to customers. That's both internal and external. So the objective is to create and distribute resources for customers to use to maybe navigate or identify the solutions to their questions prior to having to wait for someone to respond to them. So I'll expand on that a little bit. It, one of the suggestions was to maybe have a matrix out there that tells customers if this, then that, go here, this is what you need. So it kind of helps them navigate their own answers if they don't want to try to get a hold of someone. But obviously, we want them to be able to get a hold of us. But that's just another tool for them to be able to have a quicker response time. And then again, you'll see that cross-training comes up. If we can cross-train our employees, then there's someone there to always back up another person. So because one person's out of the office, doesn't mean that they, that people can't get customer service. They can go to that other person that's backing them up. And then also to set a standard of response time within 24 hours. So even if you can't give someone the exact answer they need, you can at least respond and let them know that you're working on it, that you received their request. So setting up parameters to be able to provide that 24-hour response. And then the other one over here was to increase awareness of services offered. Just to make sure people understand all of the services the county provides. One of those objectives was to educate our existing employees or new employees. A lot of us don't know what other departments offer. So being able to educate current employees will be able to have them be able to help educate the customers that are reaching out to us. That's the only objective we really got to there. I did make a note that this does fall a little bit under maybe communication and maybe would be deferred back to Adam. But I don't know if Adam's still here. Oh, there you are. So that was, that's all we came up with, four objectives for that one. So if we move over here, you will see a lot of, a lot of overlap. So one of the, one of the goals was to integrate services. And again, cross-training staff came up and then combining service delivery. Another one was, as we've talked about over here, is to enhance talent. Help pay for education, again, training and development dollars. And use our ARPA funds to maybe enhance training opportunities. We weren't sure if that was something that was going to be allowed, but I think our corp council is looking into those options for us. And then again, number three, attract and develop the workforce. So enhance our benefit offerings. Provide job flexibility. Source passive candidates. And then create innovative ways to recruit. And then lastly, retain a quality workforce. So again, enhance our benefits, create promotion opportunities, and create recognition events to make people feel recognized, appreciated, and to help them with their engagement. So that's, that's what we came up with. And again, it's, I think it's interesting that with two different groups, we saw a lot of overlap. Any questions?
What is a passive candidate?
So passive candidate is when, they're not looking. So for instance, you are looking to attract a certain candidate. You reach out to people that are in a similar position and to see if they'd be interested in having a conversation about the opening that you have. They aren't actually applying. So they normally wouldn't have applied unless you reached out to them. What's that? Poching, well, poaching, that's not a nice word. But it happens. What's that? With eggs, yeah, true. I can.
Hold on.
Oh, you can't hear? I'm sorry. Oh. She asked if you find that that's the candidate that you actually end up hiring, is the one that you try to source on your own. And we haven't done that a lot here because we didn't really have a resource to be able to source passive. I will tell you with my last recruitment that I'm working on, I did that. And that is actually a person, I think, as of right now, I will be hiring. But I don't have a lot of statistics to tell you if that's, that would be beneficial for us, but I think it's worth trying. Yeah. Should I pass it off?
Yes, pass it off to the next group.
What's that? We did talk about that. We did, that did come up. I don't know if it didn't get written down, but we did talk about being competitive as possible with our wages. That, that was one that came up. So I see that it's not up here, so I'll add it. Who am I giving this to?
Who is Public Infrastructure Speaker?
Good evening. We have the public infrastructure. The first goal was to provide broadband to every single, every single St. Croix County resident and business. Complete a study is one of the objectives. Complete a study to local, to locate underserved areas. The next one is partner with service providers and expand broadband infrastructure in rural areas. Make broadband accessible to all citizens. Manage broadband project to ensure goals were met. Another one was maintain high-quality county highways in a sustainable and efficient manner. County highways, not Robbie's highways. Implement technology that can reduce costs and increase efficiencies. Maximize state and federal funding to fund local infrastructure projects. Another one was provide well-designed spaces or buildings to serve the public. This is all buildings, whether it's a highway building, it's a park building, or it's a county building somewhere for employees. It's all buildings. Reduce dependence on fossil fuels, look for sustainable design. The next one was continue to improve, develop county parks and trail systems. Create opportunities for more campers cabins. Continue to identify and develop new park properties. Questions? Hearing none? Community well-being. Is there anybody for community? Oh. You can't let them off the hook that easy.
Yeah, yeah. Whoever has questions, we have time for discussion, yep. So we're still discussing public infrastructure, okay? Sorry, Adam, can't, we can't skip that. Everyone's got to have a conversation. So Ellen, did you, or?
Camper cabins is one type of camping, but there's other types of camping. Oops, sorry. Camper cabins is one type of camping, but there's other camping that we've identified. Did that not get put up, even though it was on the identified ideas?
It included everything?
Yeah.
Okay, could that be changed on there? Can we make that edit? To public infrastructure, please? Thank you. Whoever's over there, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. I can't type the notes correctly if we don't have the correct things up there. Any other discussion on public infrastructure team? Anything that was not covered that you wish would have covered? Again, any for any of the categories? Oh, we have a question over here.
I don't know if I heard it as you were going through, but did you have anything about working, right now, the county highway department works a lot of projects with the towns and even some of the cities with doing different work. But I don't know that I seen anything about intergovernmental project to continue to go down that path.
Department heads? Rob, microphone.
Sorry. We do an extensive amount of work with our local partners, but that's at their discretion. So to a certain extent, we'll, we'll continue that relationship. But it's a bipartisan relationship that we don't control completely. So I don't think it was brought up for that reason.
Thoughts, discussions, further? Okay, here, go ahead. Mike, Mike, please.
Under the, under, there's nothing about housing. Would that be part of infrastructure? I mean, it is on the top. You have parks, broadband, roads, public transportation, housing, recovery housing. And there's nothing up there on those. And housing is a major problem. I don't know if that's the right word or not. And so I, I mean, it's almost like. Issue, yeah, issue, there you go. But I mean, I just think that the housing got ignored. And it's too important to be ignored.
Well, when we talk about, before you write it down, Jim. When we talk about housing, if it's under the infrastructure, that would signify that the county was owning low-income housing or somehow was getting into ownership of housing. We do not currently own anything. There are some counties that get into that. St. Croix County has not. It would be a huge dollar amount to get into that area. So not to say that that's not an option, but is that a realistic option? Right, there may be other housing opportunities that we can look at that are not owning and building apartment complexes.
Ken, what I would suggest regarding housing would be the county as a facilitator to housing opportunities. As there are many funds and grants currently available in the state of Wisconsin and federally under the American Recovery Plan, as well as a number of other sources. Where if the county were the facilitator with interested parties to look at these opportunities for low-income or low-low income or transitional housing or rapid rehousing, any of the programs. We could facilitate that conversation and possibly develop those partnerships.
Right, absolutely. So that's more of a community well-being than an infrastructure. I just wanted to clarify the difference between what list it ends up on.
There was a couple of hands raised, so I saw Scotty, but there was someone else. Did I miss you or was it answered? Okay, so do we feel good about putting housing in committee, community well-being and not in public infrastructure? So our note taker can sit down?
Oh, I don't know. What about public transportation? I mean, I'm just going off the sheet that the department heads had down after public infrastructure. And it's not, I mean, if it's not there, it should definitely go someplace else. Because that was way high on our list of important things.
Again, I would suggest that public transportation at this point in time be placed on public well-being. As we're essentially looking at the same. We're looking at facilitating conversations amongst people who are in the transportation industry into doing business in St. Croix County.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't left out because it's too important to have that happen.
Hey, Judy. Hey Judy, we missed you at the meeting.
No, I was the one. All right. Who, someone? Okay. All right, did I miss any hands that went up or anything on public infrastructure discussions? But those are really good points because those are very top things that the citizens and everyone was talking about is, is housing and transportation. So let's not try to miss those. All right, hearing none. Take it away, Adam.
All right, thank you. Our groups one and two kind of collaborated on both the questions and, or the goals and the objectives. So I'll just go through some of them. There's a couple where we didn't get around to developing the objectives for it, but we have the goals listed. So I'll start with everything that we have an objective for first. The first one was integration of behavioral health into healthcare, into the healthcare system. So with the objectives for that, we're looking at initiating and coordinating efforts with healthcare facilities and coordinating efforts with state policymakers. I know I work closely with public health and they're already doing that in some capacity with, during the COVID response efforts. I know that there are other, other meetings that are set up to meet with stakeholders within the healthcare, within the healthcare entity. within the healthcare, within the healthcare entities throughout the county, but looking at how we can make those maybe a little bit more regular and improve upon that process. The next one is develop a relationship and interface between public safety and public health. Really looking at that collaboration to use it more as kind of preventative measures that can be taken for people who, so that way, well, I'll just go down to the objective here. So, coordination between law enforcement entities and HHS for pre and post arrest. We're looking more at the preventative measures for that. And then, we would need adequate staffing for both of that. I know there are already efforts where we are doing collaboration, but looking at ways that we can streamline those efforts and break down some of the silos that may exist. The next one is develop data-driven and person-centered services. So, really looking at the data that we have collected and letting that inform the services and the service delivery that we are offering. So, whether that's more, a lot of this was really looking at it through a health lens, so whether it's more telehealth, whether it's more in-person services, so using the data that we collect to inform how we deliver those services. Moving over here, improve outreach to residents of the county. So, that really boils down to communication. And I know we talked about that in the service delivery. And each one of these pieces all has a communication element to it. So, there was Supervisor Ard had the phrase "one call, two clicks." That's really just to simplify the access to the information. So, making sure that the information on the website is easy to find, easy to understand. If somebody's calling and has a question, they're able to be transferred to the right person. So, that's really looking at our internal processes and determining how to improve the efficiencies within that. We are working on updating our website, so that will address one of these, one of these objectives. So, looking at how we can make the information easier to find on our website. We're currently working on that, but that'll be an ongoing process, because it's a living, breathing thing. So, and then, one of the other pieces that came up was to develop a program to educate residents on the services and attractions through open houses, social media platforms, and website content. So, looking at having the public come in and see what community development's doing, what public health is doing, so they get more of a hands-on experience. And then, also having more information on our website through the use of video and just website content to explain the services that are available to the residents of this county. I did add the facilitate opportunities for low-income housing, and create or facilitate more public transportation opportunities. Those were the two that were just brought up. The other goals that were, we didn't get around to creating the objectives for, were promote a comprehensive public safety environment, and create policies and practices that provide for equal treatment for all populations.
I feel like number five is like a basic execution of the goals of the county, or the goal, how a county government should serve. I don't know that that's, anyway, my bigger thing was like public transportation. I guess depending on the scale of what people's ideas are, I don't know that that's a two- or three-year goal, and I don't know that's, of all the priorities we heard today, I don't know that that's one of the ones I had in mind.
Okay. Okay, I'm seeing Tim, and I saw some other hands, too. So, let's hear all the comments. Tim, go ahead.
So, to the, to the public transportation question, I don't think we're talking about like fleets of buses in, in that implementation. The, the goal here is to seek to partner with existing transit systems that are private entities that are contracting with existing cities like New Richmond, River Falls, and see if we can extend their reach into Hudson and other underserved areas. So, I, I don't think that it's a very large scope that we're talking about here. It's more about leveraging what we already have in place.
I'm gonna get it towards, I think for number five, with the equal treatment, I agree that's something that we would expect for employees, or for county services, but I actually would like to see it more, more active. And I would like the wording to talk more about creating an equitable and inclusive culture, not only within the organization, but maybe within the county as a whole. So, I would see it more, more active than just making sure people are treated equally. I would, I think it's a, and then, looking at policies and procedures within the county is a way that we could achieve that goal of equity and inclusion.
I got a quick pointer to make on that. I happen to be on social media once in a while and watch what's going on around the United States with that particular language being used. And it is, it is being used to divide, not create equity or equality. And I would look for us as a county, if we want to create, if we want to create divisions, keep going down the path that everywhere else in the United States is going. But if we want to build unity and bring communities together, I think we should start avoiding these, these wedge issues that are, that are tearing us apart. And Supervisor Cook, I, I think I know your heart and where you, where you lie on that. And I don't think it's on the division side, but it is being, those particular, that particular terminology is being used to divide us across this entire country. And I think we should do everything we can to avoid the wedge, and do everything we can to bring our, bring our communities back together with that. That's my two cents on, on that one.
I will, I will just add that it came out in the survey, just so everybody know, the citizen survey, that was a, a big importance to the citizen. So, just keeping that in mind, I'm not, I'm just throwing information that you guys already have, but to your point, that was a huge part of what the citizens wanted to see change. So, think about that throughout your different areas as well. The big things were affordable housing, transportation, not necessarily public transportation, but more, you know, right, transportation. Some said that. And then, DEI was one of those big buckets as well.
There was a request just to read number five again.
Okay.
So, number five was to create policies and practices that provide for equal treatment for all populations.
Yeah, and so, I feel like that's, yeah. I feel like there's, as I'm just looking, I heard it from different buckets that said all, but you guys decide. I mean, it's, it's up to you guys as supervisors, and, go ahead.
Paul and I can have a conversation offline, I guess, about it more. But I just want to say, but I will agree with his assessment that my intent is not to make it divisive. And I think that we, as a county, do not need to have our goals of reacting to what the citizens are looking for and have communicated, and have our, our purpose hijacked by what's happening potentially on a national level. So, I think we can still, I think it's still important for us to work towards that equitable and inclusive environment, even, even though we know that there are issues that are happening, you know, around, around the world that maybe sometimes are preventing that and making it, making it divisive. So, I don't want it to seem divisive. I want us to be successful in that endeavor, so.
And I just want to reiterate my respect for Supervisor Cook and the fact that I wasn't bringing that up to, to chop you up, Kara, just so you know. I, I just wanted to make sure that all the supervisors, because not everyone's on social media or watching the news all the time and realizing how divisive things are. So, I agree with you. I want to do stuff that builds us, brings us back together and, and bridges those gaps, and has equal treatment for all, all citizens and residents across this country, so, and across our county. So, thank you, Kara.
I think someone here has, you, go ahead.
Yeah, I think if we, if it's important that it stays, I guess, in the foreground of consideration, then I'm fine with it being there. And the wording as it is, is, would be the preferred way for it to be up there, if that makes sense for me.
Okay. All right. Right here?
Yeah, I just have one, and I don't know how well this fits in, whether it goes for service or community well-being, but one thing that I guess I've become much more aware of tonight was in our protection, that we're losing, we're going to be losing a lot of people. We have the potential to lose a lot of people. And it's becoming harder and harder to find people to fill empty jobs. That is going to affect everything. And if we're looking at a two- or three-year thing, that's a real important thing, and I know that's a very specific area, but it's an incredibly important area. And I don't know how that fits in here or where it should go, but it's something that we should all be very aware of and try to, I don't think the word is fix, but I don't know. I don't know what to do.
So, can you make like a, maybe a clear suggestion? Are you saying add, like, yeah, are we saying add a different language, or what, what is kind of like the request? Specific request, so we can have, so other individuals can have conversation around that?
So, let me read number four, because it might get at what Judy is, Supervisor is talking about. Promote a comprehensive public safety environment. That, does that kind of get at what you're, what you're talking about?
Okay. Okay. So, I had Paul also raise his hand, so, that, oh, you're good? Okay. Okay, you're good. Okay, right, oops, okay.[1354.61][1354.61](Laughter). All right, so, go ahead.
I think that could be one of the objectives under the comprehensive public safety environment is how do we get people? And I think the reason that we had a hard time coming up with objectives, because if we could reduce crime, fix mental health and AODA issues, I don't think any of us would be in this room. We'd be making much more money. So, it's, it's a lot harder of an objective to fulfill when nobody has the answers.
So, would you say recruitment and adequate staffing add to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Was there someone over here? I'm sorry. I, if I, I can't see.
I was just gonna ask, Ken, that was kind of discussed in this group, wasn't it, to some extent? Recruitment and retention? I mean, there's overlap.
Yeah, I mean, we were looking at the county as a whole under service delivery, at, at the total workforce. They were looking specifically at public protection workforce here. That's the only difference, really. So, I think it's been covered in multiple themes that we have going on.
Okay. And then, Tim?
So, just real quickly, Supervisor Ockerhoff, is it the concern that we want to specifically say that one of the things we need to do is provide support services to our public safety folks to help with retention?
I think it should be looked at, and maybe we should do that. I don't know how bad, this is the first that I became aware of how potentially serious it could be. And I think that if it does get pretty serious, we're going to have to take a really hard look, because you just can't hire someone off the street to be a policeman. It takes about a year, six months to a year. So, it's thinking ahead and taking care of it, but it just has the potential to be a huge problem that can't be quickly solved, so we should start looking at it now. So, yes, I think public protection should be something specifically listed. But I may not have a totally complete understanding, but from my understanding of what I've learned tonight, it should be.
Okay. So, then, let's go to Paul, and then, let's go to Adam to.
I was just gonna ask for a clarification on what the, what the objective was that Supervisor Hall had said.
So, do we need, I guess, I was trying to understand what the point was, and the way I read it, we have an issue potentially coming forward with retaining and recruiting officers. Part of that is the stressful working conditions, especially lately that they've been in. Is offering additional services something that would help with that or not? And if so, do we need to develop that as a goal or an action?
Okay. Paul, do you have your?
Think about how to write that. Give me some.
Okay.[1548.21][1548.21](Laughter).
So, one thing we can do in this is look at to our neighbors in the, like, just west of us. There's a case in point with this where good friends of mine, their son, who lives in one of the cities just west of us, major city, and. So, he got robbed at gunpoint, and he called 911, and they didn't, they weren't even able to dispatch an officer to take a report for him. So, Judy, to your, to your case, or to your point, like, we have to be proactive on this now, because the sheriff and our public protection, 12 openings, six applicants, and what, Kathy, did you say, two? Two made it through. So, there continues to be 10 openings. So, yes, we need to, we need to get this figured out.
Okay, so, Adam, it looks like they're saying to add that to the, okay.
Yeah, sorry. I was gathering my thoughts on how to say it.
Sorry, I needed to be rude, but I was like.
Yeah, it's fine.
Go ahead.
I'm trying not to say, like, at specific cities and like, you know, be a dick to other people, you know?
All right. Okay, we got a hand raised over here. Let's, yep, let's have our.[1636.21][1636.21](Laughter).
Turn my mic back on. I think it suffices, in my opinion, that, that we know there's maybe an issue there that needs to be addressed. I do have a concern about how much we discuss this. You know, I, I think public protection would be far more comfortable if we addressed this in maybe more of a private manner, with just my thought.
Okay. Adam, do you have what you need written up there?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion, thoughts, ideas to the last community well-being? All right. Hearing none. All right. Good job, everyone. We are coming to a conclusion here. So, what we're, I'm gonna do is take all of this, and there's some object, you said some, some goals don't have objectives underneath. I'm gonna need a volunteer or two for maybe half an hour or an hour for those additional Quickly, probably in the next week. Okay. All right, Ken will be one, okay? Can I get another volunteer? Because we gotta, we gotta get some objectives underneath these areas. So, Ken is one. Can I get a supervisor, please? And, and then, you know, I like two from each. It seemed to work with two from each. So, so, two department, okay. Yeah, no, no. So, Bob and Ken are department heads that have volunteered to come up with objectives? Okay. All right, we got one sup, okay, thank you. All right. I'm gonna get in touch with you guys. We gotta make sure we meet in the next week, because here's the deadline for me, to honor my deadline for all of you, okay? So, I have to have this strategic plan draft written out and sent by July 9th is the plan. You will have two weeks to review, make comments, send me your thoughts, et cetera. I will have over the weekend to kind of put it together, put my presentation together. I will have over the weekend to kind of put it together, put my presentation together, and we're meeting again on July 27th. And this time, we are just presenting the plan. So, there shouldn't be too much more discussion. That's what I'm trying to prevent, okay? So, any, as you walk away, if you have any additional thoughts, ideas, things that you didn't think of but comes up for you, please send them to me ahead of time, because I like to put them in there and have a really good, like, almost final. So, we'll, we'll present it on July 27th. Any minor changes, we'll, we'll do afterwards, but the plan should be in Ken's hands early August, okay? Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, I just, yeah. So, again, you will be reviewing it. I will complete my draft, send it to Ken to send it out to all of you to review for two weeks. That's, July 23rd will be the deadline for your review, and then, I'm going to make any changes, additions that I need to make, and then, I will present it on July 27th here. Does that make sense? Okay, all right, good. All right, so I'll get together with the group that volunteered, thank you. We got some objectives to create. Otherwise, with nothing else, looks like people are ready, like, they're, they're ready to go. I don't know if you formally moved the, the meeting to close, so I'm going to throw it back to the chair.
Yep, yep, we're, we're still in session, finish our agenda. We have any requests for future agenda items? Let Ken or I know, and we'll get that in there. Notes with correspondence, do we have anything?
Nope.
So, I rule us adjourned, and our next meeting is the 27th then, right? Yep. Thank you, everybody.